Good evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, November 18th, 2020 is called to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Clymer is present, Commissioner Steiner is present, Commissioner Ellison is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Commissioner Kish will be calling in, Chairman Bray is present, Vice Chairman Barnes is absent, we have a quorum.
Is Commissioner Kish on the line now?
Hello?
Oh, there he is. Perfect. I will entertain a motion to please excuse Vice Chairman Barnes from this evening's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we excuse Vice Chairman Barnes from this meeting this evening.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Ellison, to excuse Vice Chairman Barnes, is there any discussion?
No.
Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number one, this is online, this is to approve the draft minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on November 4th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the planning and zoning minutes for November 4th, 2020.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the draft minutes from November 4th, 2020. Is there any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items, these are non-agenda items. Is there any speaker cards? Anyone wish to come forward? Alright. Onto disclosure of ex parte communication, this is an opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting on any items scheduled for the discussion of this agenda. Is there any disclosures need to be made?
No.
Commissioner Kish?
No.
Thank you. Alright, we'll go right into the public hearing, and I will open the public hearing for the rezoning from PAD and AG to PAD for the Innovation Center. Steve is going to present this to us this evening, I think this is a reoccurring case that we saw at one time, and hopefully everybody involved has made some progress, so, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Yes, this is an item that was first heard by the Planning Commission on September 16th, it was continued and then continued again on November 4th, but I have a presentation here that I will go through just to reacquaint the commission with the project and then go over what staff and applicant have been working on since the continuation. Again, tonight's property is, there we go, 224 acres located here, I-10, 303, so this property here, former Trotter Track, right there in the center, general plan has this as business and commerce, it also designates areas along I-10, within the transit corridor. And what all of that means is, the general plan looks for properties along this area, on the subject property, for high intensity and high employment type of uses. And again, just to acquaint ourselves with what we have surrounding the area, this subject property here, I-10, 303, we have Borrow Pit right here, and we have an RID canal that kind of forms the southern boundary of the rezoned area. Cotton Lane RV right here, as we keep going west, we have residential property here, zone single family, about 430 units, we wrap around, we get the Destiny RV Resort, then we come over here, Las Palmas, about 750 single family units, and as we keep going, we got County Island here, I-10, and then we have the prison complexes right up here. And a request that the commission was looking at, it was a request for zoning this property right here, it's got existing PAD over a portion of it, the RV, Cotton Lane RV, kind of goes up north across the RID into this yellow area here, the green areas are currently zoned agricultural. Within that PAD, you had overall about 1,500 residential sites and support commercial, right now, development has occurred pretty much south of the RID, there are no residential development north. And this was the site plan that was included in the PAD, as you can see down here in between Van Buren and RID, you have some of these sites, the golf course developed, nothing to the north yet. So within the request, there was 224 acres, and there were three zones proposed within that PAD. Dominant zone was light industrial, I-1, that's about 62% of the overall project was intended for light industrial. Then we move over, here we have a commercial, retail, entertainment, about 12% of the project, and then we come down here, we have 59 acres that was, that's intended for office and employment type of uses. Also, a couple deviations, the PAD was requesting additional building height within this District A for the light industrial, up to 150 feet, there is also an intent to reduce the landscape buffer that's required along I-10. So again, P and Z, we heard this on September 16th, commission took action to continue it so the applicant and staff could work on potential stipulations tied to the rezone, and on November 4th, the hearing before, the Planning and Zoning Commission applicant requested continuation so they could continue working with staff. And later on in the presentation, I'll go over again in more detail what we have been working on, but what I was going to go through here is, just to recap with some of the items that staff looks at during a rezoning, as outlined in our zoning ordinance, and these are 10 criteria that staff looks at, and I know we went over these at the prior hearings, I'll only probably touch on a couple of them in a little more detail. And so, one of the ones I wanted to touch on in a little more detail is, the first one is, any rezoning has to be consistent with the general plan. As discussed at the first hearing in September, staff had a recommendation of the dial, and one of the reasons was, we found it inconsistent with the general plan. And just to go over some of those findings again, the general plan shows I-10, this area, transit corridor, takes into account this property here, we also looked at this property with this business and commerce designation as a high employment uses, it's also shown as a unique property in this area of Goodyear, you've got two freeways, so you have visibility and potential access that, to that property. And some of the types of uses that the general plan kind of looks at, you're looking at maybe office, entertainment, food and beverage, lodging, things of that nature that can be a, provide a mix of uses and destination type of uses that can leverage that visibility and access provided by those two freeways. What we have north of this area, there we go, you can see some of this purple area, that is light industrial, takes advantage of the 303 corridor, especially with Luke Air Force Base being up in here, a lot of this area is intended for use, low employment type of uses such as light industrial, warehousing and distribution, again, take advantage of the freeway in this area and protect Luke Air Force Base. As we get further south, general plan looks at more business and commerce, those employment type uses, entertainment, lodging, retail, office. And part of what staff looked at as a market analysis was conducted for this property, and so some of the findings again were, to highlight these yellow areas, that's undeveloped industrial land within the city, as you can see, there's a large supply of available land within the city still, and the analysis conclude that even after 2030, there was still quite a few years left of industrial land available. So for item two, suitability, the only thing I probably wanted to touch on here was the Borrow Pit, that's on the portion of the property intended for the employment uses, we will address that with a special use permit, however, at this time, we cannot provide, at the time of zoning, cannot provide any benchmarks to the filling of that pit, so at this point, we cannot guarantee any kind of schedule or filling of the pit. Three, compatibility with the surrounding area, again, just want to touch on, what staff looked at was existing residential to the south and potential residential to the west and south, along with Citrus Road is here, so this area leads to many residential developments south of this area, so this is going to be a main corridor as the west Goodyear area develops, so that was a consideration that we looked at with the light industrial, what you have potentially are large buildings with large heights, large bulk, when you're looking at buildings with 800,000 square feet up to a million square feet, that is a large building. You potentially also have noise and light trespass issues, especially if you have cross dock, a lot of truck traffic going in and out, and moving to the trucks, with trucks you have, one, the storage and circulation issues, again, Citrus Road, there would be no prohibition against trucks using Citrus Road. And with having the residential close to this property, that does pose some of the issues that staff wanted to look at, and in doing so, we did look at a couple examples in the city where we do have residential near industrial, and again, these were two examples that we looked, we've already looked at, so I'll just go over those real quick, and also mention that with this compatibility question in mind, staff did work with the applicant on potential stipulations to try and mitigate some of the concerns that we have, and again, I'll go over the stipulations later. Again, this was the PV 303 example that we looked at, you have existing subdivision here, here's that 300-foot buffer where height is restricted, as well as uses, uses in this 300-foot area are basically limited to office, you couldn't have warehousing or distribution within 300 feet of the neighborhood. The other one was accomplice data centers there on Bullard and Yuma, and just wanted to point out that again, we have a situation where you have industrial next to residential, but what you're looking at is 400 to 500 feet of separation in between those two land uses. So moving through the criteria, four and five, four will handle through our standard notice, five again speaks to that market analysis, and again, what I think that market analysis told us was that the rezoning was not necessary in terms of needing to meet a demand right now for a specific user or for industrial zoning. Again, we had many years of industrial land able to be absorbed within the city. Then six and seven, again, I think we will be able to address those through stipulations of approval, and then if development occurs through our development review processes. And then eight, nine, and 10, we have reviewed those items in the past, I don't need to go too much detail in that, into them, other than maybe 10 noting that several issues that we have identified, we've tried to address through stipulations. So moving to the recommendation, again, the staff recommendation is for denial of this request, for those reasons stated in the staff report, and mainly being that we find the light industrial portion of this request is inconsistent with what the general plan calls for. However, we did have an alternative recommendation that has stipulations of approval should the commission decide to take another action, and some of those stipulations, I'll just go through here again, and this is, some of these stipulations staff and applicant have worked together to come up with here. So regarding building heights, the request for the 150 feet, that request will be only limited to those uses encouraged by the plan, otherwise it'll be 70 feet, and then it'll be only 50 feet when within 300 feet of the south property line, which is shared with the residential to the south. The dock doors and storage loading, that cannot be facing the south property line unless there's that 100-foot wide landscape buffer to provide some buffering between the residential and these uses. Another stipulation, and again, this is, this exhibit here will tie to this one here, so within 300 feet in this area A, within 300 feet, there'll be an operational limitation, so between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, there'll be no outdoor activities occurring within area A, and that covers most of the area adjacent to the residential to the south. Now, as we move east and we move away from the bulk of the residential, there's some storage here and some RV spots here, that area shrinks down to 220 feet. And then here again, we're just looking for screening of equipment and parking lots. We will maintain a 30-foot buffer adjacent to the freeway, same with the landscape setbacks along the public streets, the last two steps, again, the special use permit for the Borrow Pit and requirement for vertical construction within two years. Again, just going over the public participation, staff did conduct all notice as we were required, we've not received any letters or opposition, there was actually the one letter of support read into the record at the September 16th hearing. And just to summarize again, staff does recommend denial, but however, should the commission decide to take another action, we would recommend that you do so and adopt the stipulations in the draft ordinance attached to the staff report. And the next hearing for this item is anticipated to be December 7th before the City Council. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation, staff's available for questions, the applicant will also have a presentation as well.
Thank you, Steve. And before we keep moving down this, Chris, would you introduce the other city staff that's here in case somebody has questions?
Sure. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so we have Harry Paxton with Economic Development, Sumit Mohan with, he's our Director of Engineering, and Lori Gary is the Economic Development Director. And of course, you all know Sarah.
Yes. Sarah's always with us.
Yes.
We caused her a lot of work, I'm sure.
She was hiding, I just wanted to call her.
I guess before we move into the, the next presentation, do you guys have any questions for staff at this time?
No.
Commissioner Kish?
I do not at this time.
Thank you. We'll move right into the presentation from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think if staff could be kind enough to pull up my presentation?
I can try.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm hoping with your indulgence, I could have the same amount of time as staff had, which is just shy of 15 minutes, if I go over a little bit on my 10 minutes, Mr. Chair. I'll do my best to make it efficient.
I'll give you 10 minutes, if you're close, then we'll play it by ear.
Okay. For your records, my name is Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback, it's my pleasure to be here today on behalf of Innovation Center. Next slide, please. So my clients in this case, also, two of which are here with me tonight, are Jim Fion, John Worsler, they're local, they're well capitalized, if you ask anyone in town, who's the best guy to know in office, it's Jim Fion, if you ask the same question on industrial, it's John Worsler, these guys know this market in and out. Next? Next slide, if you would, please, thank you. They come with capital, out of New York, and they come with an extremely experienced design team in Butler Design Group, they have done over 30 projects, developments here in Goodyear alone, nearly half of what you see would be Butler Design. Next slide. So, and I do want to start by telling you, we're very grateful for the additional time that the commission gave us with staff, we're very grateful for how hard they worked with us, and frankly, we're grateful that you were willing to schedule this special hearing tonight, so we really do appreciate it, we think from that, we have been able to achieve a win-win with staff through the course of these stipulations and what I'm about to share with you. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, as staff mentioned, it really comes down to the one issue is the light industrial, and so, at the end of our many, many, many conversations that Christopher and I had, I asked him, because you have these dueling recommendations, what would it take to get staff support? And, and rather than put Christopher on the spot, he was kind enough to send me an email, so these are, this is directly, this is the email that I received, and I think what you'll see is, the vast majority of what we're presenting is exactly what the city's vision for this site is, and there's really one small area where we disagree, which is the cross dock logistics or the internet fulfillment, and I'm going to explain to you why I think that is still a very necessary component to fulfill the city's vision for this site. Next slide, please. So, as you saw in there, the primary goal that staff mentioned, really from the very beginning when we started this back in 2018, was there's a desire for retail and for entertainment. So when you look at the site, we have three different districts, District B is commercial, retail, and entertainment, 26 acres, but I would also tell you, in the permitted uses, all 224 acres permit entertainment, so that is a permitted use for a user to come to any portion of this site. So again, very much in line with the city's vision. Next slide, please. They talked about having an employment destination center, destination center with high wage jobs, you've got 59 acres of this site, District C, that again, is designed to have these very type of jobs. Next, please. And then finally, you've got the Commerce Park, so the Commerce Park does permit all the uses we've just discussed, it does allow entertainment, it does allow retail, but it also proposes light industrial, and this is where we get to the crux of our issue, it does allow cross dock logistics and internet fulfillment. Next slide, if you would, sorry to make you my van away here, but we went a little further in these steps, and this is what's different than when we were here with you last time, we recognized that one of the concerns was, how is this going to look from the freeway? How is this going to look from the frontage road? And staff had a great concern that there were going to be visibility to these cross dock facilities, so we agreed, the area you see here in blue prohibits cross dock or large internet fulfillment sites. Next? We also went a step further, because they told us that they really, it's important, even though the site plan we're showing you is conceptual, so we don't have specific elevations we can show you, that it's important that, that, that particular frontage, you know, have that kind of nicer, upscale, good quality, enhanced design examples, so we shared some examples, next slide, if you would, and these are three, and so there's a specific stipulation that requires that everything within that zone comply with this enhanced design examples, giving you more of that office type of look. Next slide? And next slide? Next slide? So when you put this all together, you have a district that does fulfill the vision that staff tells you they want here for this particular site, all 224 acres. Next? So again, the crux of that issue, if you look at District A, you look at District B, you look at where we've already prohibited cross docks and internet fulfillment, you have 106 acres that is completely in line with the city's vision. The remainder of the site, the place that we disagree, is essentially the hole in the donut, what's tucked behind that frontage road, where, that's where we're suggesting you to, that it's necessary to have those cross dock logistics and internet fulfillment. Next? And the very reason it's necessary is because of the cost of infrastructure to this site, it's extremely high cost of infrastructure, and you have to put that infrastructure in to have the type of uses that staff wants. The second reason is, e-commerce is the future and growing by the day, the analysis that they're using for this are from 2018, 2019, the world looks a lot different today than it did then. And the last is, because putting these entitlements in place is going to allow that vision to happen, and it's, I would suggest to you, much better for the city than having it remain vacant, or worse yet, develop as RV sites, the residential sites, their RV sites are the existing entitlements there today. Next? So just quickly breaking that down, when you look at the cost of infrastructure, this is Citrus Road today, and we didn't manufacture this picture, this is straight off Google Earth, if you go out there, this is what it looks like, it is a two-lane rural road where people pull over their horse trailers and ride their horses, that's a far cry to have an employment destination, it requires pretty significant improvements to Citrus Road, to turn it into an arterial. Next slide? We also have to put in a signal, we have to work with ADOT to have access off of that frontage road, we have to provide for a portion to cover the bridge covering that RID canal, this is significant, significant upfront money necessary to be able to develop this site. Next slide? There also has to be a brand-new sewer line, come all the way up from Van Buren underneath the RID canal, an entirely new waterline system, so if you put these, these infrastructure pieces together, you're looking at over $10 million necessary to do anything on this site. Next slide, please. And I can also tell you that the city's own study attests to the fact, the only thing that can be developed here today without a significant financial contribution by the city, and we're not asking for one, is industrial, so when you look at this, it tells you, that's the only thing in the market that makes sense today without a significant financial contribution. Next? By the way, earlier today, you look around some of the other cities, if you, we looked at those employment destination centers that staff wants here, this was approved today by the city of Phoenix, 2:30 today, is a $205 million investment to make an employment center happen, that's, if you compare that same number and you use it for Innovation Center, if they want to make that an employment center, that's a $13 million contribution, that I would suggest to you, we can accomplish through cross docks and logistics. Next slide, please. The same is true, if you look at the Price Road Corridor, at some point, staff suggested to us that you can't have light industrial and have a Class A employment destination corridor, and I would tell you, we respectfully disagree, if you look at the Price Road Corridor in Chandler, it's, the city has been able to accomplish that, significant Class A destination employment uses and light industrial, the two can work together synergistically. Next? And then finally, it's also true when you look at the Northwest Employment Area in Gilbert, again, significant public infrastructure investment, over $53 million in a site where you do have light industrial that's mixing with those employment destination uses. Next? So again, we're not asking for money, we're suggesting to you that allowing us to put these cross dock logistics and internet fulfillment facilities in the hole of the donut, tucked behind everything else, provides the opportunity for the retail, for the entertainment, for the office uses to develop, they're not going to come to vacant dirt, unentitled dirt without the infrastructure in place. Next? And so, you might also say, well, why not office and why not retail today? And this might be about the only thing that the various news sources seem to agree on today, which is, office is suffering, people are reevaluating and reassessing what office means and what it's going to look like, people are working from home, people are comfortable working from home. Personally, I'm very grateful to be back in a chamber, so thank you for doing it in person, but lots of other folks are a little different. And that the brick and mortar stores are giving way to e-commerce, e-commerce is the future of employment and is the future of retail. Next slide, please. So I nearly took a picture of my own front door, because when I drive home, it's always, you know, filled up with Amazon boxes, because the reality is, we're all becoming much more comfortable shopping online, and that's where the future of employment is, this e-commerce, to create these types of jobs. Next slide, please. That's also, this is from the U.S. Census Bureau, you can see, this is what e- Bureau, you can see, this is what e-commerce has done, from 2011 up to 2020, and then growing. It's coming, and it's coming in a giant tidal wave. Next slide? So this was actually just from an article in the Phoenix Business Journal, November 13, and it says, "Industrial Logistics Space in Goodyear Expected to Grow by More Than 200%." You're going to need 6.5 to 7 million square feet of new space per year for the next five years to keep up with demand. Next slide? So again, we're suggesting to you, take advantage of that. Use the internet logistics, internet cross-dock logistic facilities to create the opportunity that the city wants here, the vision that the city wants for retail, entertainment, and office uses to develop. Next? I would also suggest to you that that is a far better outcome for the city, a better economic outcome, when the site develops. You're looking at 7.3 million in tax revenue to the City of Goodyear. That's over the next 10 years. You're looking at one-time construction-related numbers, again, money to the City of Goodyear's, jobs in Goodyear's. Next slide? And I would also respectfully suggest to you that that is a way better outcome than this site remaining vacant. You can look at this site, you can see the RV, storage uses to the south, you can see the rural county island to the west, you can see that this is a challenging site to develop. You have to have the light industrial uses to pay for the infrastructure to make the rest happen, or it sits vacant, or worse yet. Next slide? You leave the owner with little to no choice. I mean, this is their existing entitlements. It's four 1,100 RV spaces planned for this site. Nobody here wants to see that happen, but that is their vested entitlements today. Next slide? So again, this site has been on the market for over five years. Only interest expressed has been industrial users. Been working with the city's Economic Development Department for Lori Gary, looking for a user of this site for two years with no luck. We need to entitle this site. We need to put the infrastructure in place to allow those types of uses to come. Next? So again, we're here today looking for the win-win for everybody, and we would respectfully suggest to you that what we're proposing, coupled with the stipulations that staff has worked on with us, accomplishes that. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for letting me take a little additional time.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Kish?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you coming out. Are there speakers' cards?
Yes, for Jeff Levy.
Again, it's a three-minute time limit on these, and the lights right there on the post will indicate when you're getting close to the three minutes.
Okay. Jeff Levy, I live here in Goodyear. I'd just like to step back a minute. My family were industrial and commercial developers from the East Coast. Matter of fact, I just wanted to say, I've talked to Harry over the phone from the East Coast, looking to put a building in Goodyear. We've put about a million and a half square feet in Chandler and Gilbert, and I am definitely in support of this development. I've been looking at this development before it's even planned. I drove by it. I think it's the best for that area. I mean, right now, if you look at the area, it was a mess before they took the grandstand down. And now it's sat, like they said, vacant for a couple of years, and it looks like a nuclear bomb hit it. I mean, it's just sitting vacant. The area looks horrible. When people ride down Route 10 and look at that, I mean, I'd rather hear than not say they're in Goodyear. I'd like to just step back a little for the dock doors. I mean, this development's going to put berms up, a wall up, high trees. I don't see a problem with that, because I mean, we've built places like this in New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I don't think there's any problem with industrial. Like, I don't see anything going there. I mean, to get entertainment today, to go into a place like that, I know there's one going in Gilbert, but how long will that last? Gilbert's given them free water for 10 years and a million dollars off in permit fees over there. If this development isn't approved in Goodyear, I can guarantee it's going to end up in Gilbert or Chandler. Glendale is now grabbing everything. They just approved a brand-new industrial park. West Gore announced today in Chandler, I'm sorry, Avondale. And the Phoenix Business Journal today just announced, the West Valley had 6 million square feet of logic space, and 81% of that is already absorbed. I'd like to bring up too, I know the planner said that there's a lot of industrial space here in Goodyear. I mean, I know Lakins Park was just approved, but Wagner hasn't been approved. But a lot of the things on your website for the economic, there's about four or five sites that aren't even available anymore. Amazon has token up some of them over by Lynchfield. So there's quite a few sites that aren't even available to build on or anything like that. The mayor in the city, I mean, calls for years now, and she had it just in one of the Goodyear/Lynchfield paper, that we need industry, bring industry, want to keep jobs in the town. I mean, if this is rejected, it's like, just sounds like we're pushing jobs out of the town. We need the employment in here. I mean, the apartments that are coming in here are disgusting, you know? We have apartments on every corner. How many commercial corners have we taken in the last, I watch the planning board every month, Van Buren and Bull Yard, in Sayerville, and Van Buren. It's disgusting. These are all good locations for commercial, for shopping centers. I mean, would anybody in here want to live across the street on Bull Yard and Van Buren, right there across the street from the new vantage data system and the substation that they're building there? And I know this application not only even came up, but he was talking about houses next to apartments or whatever. There's a new application coming up with a warehouse and 300 something, or 200 apartments right next to an apartment complex. Crazy. So I'd just like to say-
Your time has expired. Thank you.
All right. Can I say two sec, just two seconds? I just hope you guys-
Better make it quick.
All right. I just hope you guys do the right thing. You look like a nice bunch of guys. I'm not here to argue, but I really feel, you know, my family's been in the industrial commercial business for like 30 years, and I think this is the best application for that site and for the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other speakers' cards on this item? Anyone else from the public wish to address the council at this time, or the commission at this time? All right. Before we close this, is there any further questions for staff or the applicant from any of the commissioners? No?
I do.
Commissioner Ellison?
So what are the options? We either deny based on staff recommendations, or we approve based on stipulations. Is there a third option?
The third option would be just to approve as submitted.
Okay.
Or if you guys don't like some of the stipulations, we have the ability to dive into those as well. We've done that before. Not that I'm recommending that, I'm just saying, it's an option on the table. So, no speakers' cards, nobody further from the public. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Kish, did you have any final questions for staff or the applicant?
No questions.
Okay. With that, we, all entertaining motion, and you know, and then we can have discussion after that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we move for denial for the proposed rezoning.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Kish, to move for denial of the rezoning from PAD and AG to PAD for the Innovation Center. Is there any
No.
Commissioner Kish?
No discussion. I don't have anything to say. I'm glad that was, I'm glad that motion was made.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Nay. Oh, he's a nay. Okay. All those, do you want to do a roll call? Will that make it easier?
Yes, sir. That's what I was going to suggest. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll on that? And the motion is to deny.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
I'm going to take the prerogative to explain my vote, because I'm obviously going to be the dissenting vote. And I, you know, I think this is a hard case. I commend staff for the work that they have done on all of this, to work with the property owners to try and find something that works. And it's kind of a situation where we're trying to figure out, is this the best use now, or do we hold out for the future? And so, at this point in time, my vote is nay.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. And this still goes forward to city council, correct?
Yes, sir. So it will be considered, as Steve alluded to, at the council meeting on December 7, 6 o'clock in this room.
Okay.
As of now, in this room.
And just to make, and Melissa, I guess for the record, by the vote of five ayes, one nay, motion carries. With that, thank you guys for attending, and good luck at council. We'll move into staff communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get to my information here. So the city council met on Monday, November 16, and considered the cases that you all considered at your regular meeting in November. On the agenda that evening was, I'm getting to it, the rezoning of the Cascade Falls at Canyon Trails, which was the multifamily project at Sayerville and Van Buren. Council approved that, and they were very complimentary of the design and the color palettes and the variation in the architecture and so forth. Likewise, there was the special use permit for the Platinum Storage, which is the renovation and reconstruction, if you will, of the former Goodwill site in the shopping center where the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce is located, and that was also approved. Also, during that meeting was the comprehensive sign package for the Goodyear Recreation Campus, and council approved that. There was some discussion about digital signage with that, and they will, we are working with our friends in Park and Rec on an amendment to that package in order to allow digital signage, so that will be coming back to the commission in January is our target for that. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a question, obviously I'll announce what's in the script, but everything's on track to still meet in person in December, as of now?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
The next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on December 2, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the Goodyear Municipal Court and Council Chambers. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.